You should have gotten a little water.
Ready?
Six.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. It is now officially six o'clock and we're opening our council meeting. We will open it with invocation and a pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon thanking you and praising you for this day, all your blessings. As we gather here in City Hall tonight, we ask you for your presence and your wisdom in discussing and making decisions concerning the welfare and the betterment of our city and all the things that we have to make decisions upon tonight. We thank you for all of your blessings upon our city, but help us, Lord, to do things, dear God, that will help in every venture of our city government. We thank you. We give you all the praise. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that being said, we would like to recognize all our visitors and we thank you so much for taking out of your busy schedule, for being here. And also, I would like to introduce one of our special visitors today, one of our foreign exchange student. Now, I'm going to let her introduce herself. She's with the Leadership Program from Crockett High School. You might have to just, can you hear just before here?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is. In our program since we went from a small country called Uzbekistan in Central Asia and my program is featured in America and I'm here to chat about data, those who've been through it and it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Appreciate it. Well, she'll be spending some time with me as her chatter and we're going to walk around. We'll be visiting other departments and if you would like to speak to her, ask her any questions, she's, she'll be writing up a summary of all the experiences that she's had. And so, every department head, a department person, don't forget to speak to her and let her know who you are. And thank you so much. With that being said, do we have, we don't have any comments from the audience? And that moves us to approval of the minutes. A regular session, September the 15th, 2025, approval of minutes. Everyone has a copy?
I'm making a motion to approve.
I say.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion carries. Brings us to the order business, number two. Consider an approving ordinance amending Chapter 19 Utilities of the Crockett Code, amending Section 19 through 37, increasing the rates for residential and commercial water service, amending Section 19 dash 58, increasing the rates for residential and commercial sewer service, containing a servability clause, containing a repealing clause and providing an effective date.
Mayor and counsel, when we went through budget workshops, we discussed the fact of whether we were going to pay our debt based on that velourum tax or whether we're going to do it on a usage basis with water and sewer rates. And council directed to put part of that into the, of paying the debt by using the water and sewer rate increases. And I want to go through and discuss how that kind of breaks down for you. There's no base rate increase on water or sewer, but there is a consumption rate increase. So that basically means that the people that will be paying for the increase are the ones that use the water and the sewer. It's not across the board. And for an example, an average user, that's what you see down here at the bottom, is the 376, but that is based on the average of our total water usage for the year from all of our customers. Whereas, an individual household that uses a very minimal amount of water, say less than a thousand gallons, they won't see a dollar increase on their bill at all. It's based on that. It's not based on the fact of it's across the board. It's an average for that. And what that does is you can see on the water side, the revenue increase that it brings. You can see on the sewer side, what that brings. And that's to pay the debt for our infrastructure. And if everybody's been around town the last couple of days, you've seen plenty of water mains that have been broken. That infrastructure's been here for a long time. And not only is it pay for that, but it has leveraged funds with that as well. We're not paying the total amount because some of that is grant money that we're paying the match for. So you're not paying the total debt of the 14 million. You're just paying the portion of that that we're required to pay back. And so, that's part of it as well. And the downside to this is, is we've already approved and ratified the budget for next year. And to balance that budget, it was based upon the fact that we were going to increase the rates in our water and sewer to do that. If we choose not to raise the water and sewer rates, then we've got to find a deficit total of about $328,000 out of the adopted budget for next year. In water and sewer, if you will remember back to that budget, there's not a lot of fluff in that budget whatsoever. And in my professional opinion, if we have to cut $328,000 out of that budget, we basically won't have a water and sewer department, is what it amounts to. And that's kind of where we are at this point. And so, again, and I understand that some people are worried about the base rate, that did not increase at all. It's all based on the consumption and that's, the cent increase for consumption per gallon of sewer is .088 cents per hundred and the water is .081 per hundred gallons of water. And so, that's where we are. That's why it's proposed because during the workshop, council directed to pay that debt out of consumption instead of out of the taxes against property. So, that's my presentation and I would remind council, as we move into the discussion phase, that you need a motion and a second on the floor before discussion takes place.
What is the plan?
Okay, then I'll make a motion then. That's the only way we discuss it, is consider approving ordinance amending Chapter 19 Utilities of the Crockett Code, amending Section 19 dash 37A, increasing the rates of residential and commercial water service, amending Section 19 dash 58, increasing the rates for residential and commercial sewer service, containing a servability clause, containing a repealing clause and providing an effective date.
I second the motion. Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Hold on. To discuss.
You can have a discussion then.
Yeah, well, that's the only way we could.
Right, you can, okay. The motion had to be made and now you can have discussion.
No, you can, okay. We didn't have to vote on, okay. So it's an open discussion. So, it's open for discussion. Does someone have, did you have something you want to say?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I want to ask, I understand that we, you was talking about.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I apologize for leaving that part out. I've got it here before you. If y'all will see this separate sheet here. Ms. Hicks was questioning the fact that in the ordinance, it says for those outside the city limits, the water rates just double. And because the agenda was posted and the ordinance was posted prior to that discussion, she wanted it to be in the minutes and, and that we can bring that, this section back for an amendment. And it basically just spells out the fact, what it says is, rates for water service furnished outside the city limits shall be twice the inside city rates. Accordingly, the charges are, one, residential water, $49.34 base rate plus $1.26 per hundred gallon used, commercial water, $69.42 base rate plus $1.26 per hundred gallons used.
I want to be on the record to say that I think we've got some of the highest water rates around for the type of water that we receive and that we buy. And so, I think we need to go to the water district to revisit our, we don't have a contract. I was fixing to say contract. We don't have one. Right? Is that right? We don't have a contract with them, right?
That's what the legal.
And how many gallons of water do we buy that we don't use? How much?
It depends, it depends per month.
A million?
But aren't we in litigation about that?
At least a million gallons, right? So I think we need to go there before we raise the rates on our customers, our people that we do, I think we need to visit that. We need to visit that first. So.
Okay, in terms of where we are right now.
You also say we're not going to have a water department, right?
Okay, the one thing about it is that because of the way the budget was set, I don't think it exclude going to them, but it's going to become a legal issue and it has been a legal issue for a while.
Have you looked at Facebook and see how many people that's been saying that, that our water stinks, our water, and we get it from the water district and they're sending us bad water and we're paying for it?
Okay, what we would have to do even at the step, because that contract, it, this isn't the first time, I think you've been around long.
I've been wanting to do something about it for a long time.
Each time you have presented, but you know that it just can't say, we won't do it because we need the water. I mean, that's, that's a given. We got to have some water. But if we, to do it, it might be a better propose at this time to propose how we're going to address it legally, because you just can't say, no water. I mean, that's, I mean, like I said.
Let's just pay for the water we use.
Okay, but that, that has to be done through a legal step, correct?
Do we have a contract?
It has, you're still going to have to have a legal person to make it go into effect. You can't just go there and tell them, we're not going to do this water and they cut it off. Then where are we going to be? We do have to have water. I mean, it's not no ifs ands and buts, but there has to be a procedure or process for going through it. So what we're proposing.
If I could say something, I mean, I, you know, I just don't, I mean, what they're doing to us, I don't know the inception of that, you know, say there's no contract and there's no contract. I don't know what our obligation would be then to just to keep, you know, paying for that. And, and if it's going to take legal, if it's going to take legal action to stop it, I mean, you know, why, why couldn't we, I mean, I just don't see how you, how anyone would agree. I wouldn't be like, anything we go to do, go to buy something, they say, well, we're going to charge you more than what the price is. I wouldn't buy anything that way.
Okay.
And I said, and I've said it before, quite a while ago, I mean, you know, I understand that, you know, that they're in a bind, but I don't think it's our fault.
But even if, I mean, yeah, I understand what you're saying about the bind.
And, and if, and water is going to be the issue for our county, probably from now on, there's going to be people coming after our water and we're going to have to just, you know, do something to protect our water. And if we let them, I mean, if something happens, they shut down and we don't do anything, it's my understanding the state could come in and take the lake over and they could do whatever they wanted to with the water. I just wish there was a way that we, then if they're struggling, that we could take it over and refurbish what needs to be refurbished so that we can have the water.
Okay, but now that was the, I mean, that was our, I'm sorry, that was the statement that was made, that we were going to get, we were trying to get an assessment for what it costs to take over it. And that was what was being put together.
And part of that is in the debt that we're paying off is the assessment of.
Okay. We know how that is. I'm not going to argue with nobody. We can't control it. Okay, why don't you tell us, I mean, and I understand what Mike is saying and I understand it, but I think we are in the process of trying to make an assessment.
Of, of where we are in our assets, where they are in their assets, to see what options there are. And, and I don't think we're arguing the fact of whether we should work towards a solution in that instance, but this is more budget related to the water and sewer rates as is now.
Right now.
Yes, ma'am.
So, where we are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my, my question, so basically, the water rates, so we're still dealing with the budget in general?
Yes, ma'am.
The whole budget, right? So my, my suggestion or my recommendation is, I mean, have we actually looked at the council as a council? Have we actually looked at the budget? Actually reviewed the purchases, items that we're purchasing, things that we can go in and possibly, and you're saying that we can't cut some things. Can we go in and look and see what's priority? I mean, I mean, the council had looked at like invoices, things like that. I mean, we've got overall balances? We haven't gotten like, you know, like just say, mm, I think we, I think added this past year and not to just say the, and not to, but just say for instance, I guess the shelter, I would say that. We added that and.
The what? Animal shelter.
Animal shelter, we added that and added the, added, added that. So I'm just asking.
That was in last year's budget originally. And continue over to this one. Yes, ma'am?
What I'm asking is just, let us look at, revisit and look and see what's, what's priority.
We, and I understand that, but we approved the budget that took effect October 1st.
The budget is.
And so, and this was part of the proposed budget that was approved by council to move forward. And during the workshops, council directed that the consumption of the increase of water and sewer rates was what was going to take to be that $328,000 worth of revenue for that budget to exist, starting October 1st through September 30th.
This is to pay the debt or the water?
This is to pay the debt on the water.
How did we get there to have to do this to pay debt by the water department? It's supposed to be self-funded. I mean, our taxes supposed to be self-funded. How, how do we get there to have to use water rates to pay debt?
Because it's the Texas Water Development Board, funds that we receive for the north plant. It is for money that we're getting that's going to basically replace the water lines on East Houston.
To do for water, not.
And, and the north plant, the whole sewer plant.
So that's what I was asking you, but you're saying debt, this is debt, like overall debt.
Overall debt, that, yes.
I was talking about water. I mean, water's supposed to stay in water, sewer's supposed to stay in sewer.
And it, it is, and that's why you'll see.
So are we doing this to buy police cars?
No, sir.
Are we doing this to?
No.
Pot holes and.
No, if you, if you'll look in the water and sewer.
Not, not, I'm just asking general, not nothing to do with y'all, buddy.
In the water budget and the sewer budget, you'll look down through there and it'll show you the debt line items. And that's, it's for the, it will pay and those add up to, in the sewer side, where it says total revenue needed, the debt payment for the year is $168,626, just for sewer. And when they're raising the rates, that raises it to 171,518,69. But then you look at the water.
It's because we've been getting increases from the water department or who we buy water from.
These are just the debts for the loan from the Texas Water Development Board and those other things that are going to redo the north plant, which like I said, that's leveraged money because we're not paying the full 14 million back. It's just a percentage of those that we're paying back. And so, like on the water side, the total revenue needed to pay the debt is 159,503 and we're going to raise 157,875,16. And you put the two, and so, we were able to absorb the 2,000 in the water side and we'll have a little excess just based on the rates on the sewer side. So that, it is to pay the water and sewer debt only, it will stay within those budgets.
So what it means is everybody's not paying?
No, and they're not because it's based on the ones, consumption of water and sewer.
It's balanced out, but.
We, we do that already enough, so.
Okay, but one thing, I mean, where we are right now, with what's been allocated, what we agreed on in the budget first, the only step that we can take at this point is to go forward by, and like I said, I think we're already in the process to get an assessment of what we can do and how much we're obligated. People have been saying for years that it's not a contract, but for some reason, we haven't been able to get out of it because we needed the support of the water each time, each time we've had a fail in our water, just the supply, we've had to go back. Because you got to have water one way. But I think at this point, where we are, and everybody's frustrated, but the fairest part is if you're not using a lot of water, you're not paying more than you normally would. I mean, they didn't raise, if you're, if you're using the same amount of water, your increase is not going to be overly reflected of an additional. But we all do have out of the city limits, it is going to be, but then the infrastructure to get it out there is not as simple as it is to get it in town. We've been struggling and I'd ask Stanley to mention it a little bit, but with that busted line, just one line and then another line and then another line, just if you've driven down the street. So we are in bad shape with our sewer because it hasn't been fixed in over 60, 70 years and every time one bust. But what I'm saying that this, 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 it might be a Band-Aid, call it what you like, but if we can get through this and get a legal opinion on what's the next step, because we're going to have to go forward with it. We've already looked at the budget, everybody's made their recommendation. Do we like it? Not at this point, but we're going to have to do something about it, but we're, at this point, we need to get the water and get the sewer and get the bills paid on, because the bills are going to have to be paid one way or the other. And then from that point, we can assign a special council to go in, what, what does it really take to get out of it? And we're going to have to do that and, you know, because it's, the customers aren't happy, the people aren't happy about it.
So, so that's where I was asking question about the OCR, the American Rescue Plan Act. When they imposed that act, those monies were given to cities such as ours to support infrastructure issues, water issues, pipe main issues. And so, my question with that is, what do we do with it? I mean, did we use it for the purpose of priority items or we just made a wish list and just went through it and not even addressed the issues that the people had in the county county? Because during that time, the people had issues with water then, we had issues with streets then, we had issues with infrastructure then. So what I'm asking is, what do we do? Why didn't we react then like we're doing now? I mean, when we received this money, we should have looked at all the priority items and took them head on and addressed those. But now we're in a predicament that we, we got to figure it out. So, I, I talked with a lady today and I was comparing the water issues inside the city limits and outside. I just went a little bit, went a little bit further. And this friend of mine, just so happened, I called her and she was telling me that she was having issues because she was already had a plumber out to her house. And I said, well, sister, I said, I'm glad you told me, I said, because that's what I'm calling about. Well, I called her, she said, Trina, she said, it's water. She say, is my water bill $200. She say, and I had a leak, did not realize I had a leak and it's her water bill $400. I asked her if she had, gave me permission to get her copy of her water bill and I did. And so, she lives out in Melville, but she has a $400 water bill and she was very upset about it and she was like, y'all, please don't go up on the water. Because, I mean, she said, the water, I can't take a bath in it because it breaks me out, it has all those extra chemicals in it and I, and plus this past week or so, I've been receiving emails with bathtubs with water and it's just brown, just.
And, and I can address that. Part of that is starting, I think it was September the 15th, the lake had to do what they call a free burn. It's required to basically change over from chloramines to chlorine and, and treat the water to clean out everything. And when you do that, it does exactly what its purpose is and it's going to clean out old pipes and whatever's in those pipes is going to come out.
Well, I will, now I'll say this, with the new flushing in the water and it coming in with the four, look at your pipes. I have four pipes removed and because I'm, I'm in an old house too, they're full of rust. I don't know how they build up, I don't know, but I would bring it here just for example. You wouldn't believe that that brown is not coming so much from the water, it's coming out of those pipes.
Correct.
They're very, very, if you live in any of the older houses, I didn't know it could be that much. I'm in the process of changing mine to, I mean, firstly, to the rubber.
Only thing I got to say about that, don't nobody want to pay for it, but how are we going to get it fixed if we don't pay for it?
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it's always going to be, we don't have to pay for it, it ain't going nowhere. So, thing, after we get to paying for it, can our bill go back down?
And that's, and that's what you're waiting, working for.
Trouble is, everybody don't pay for it.
Yeah, and it, and it's fair. I mean, it's not a lot of things that everybody get. If you stop using a lot of water, your bill won't change much. If you use a lot of water, your bill's going to change a lot. And I know some people have extra things. And, and if, I mean, and so that's in terms of fairness, it doesn't get any fairer than that I agree with.
I don't have a problem if everybody paid for it.
My water bill's over $400 every month. I'm, I certainly don't want it, mine to go up, but if, if I'm asking this question right in a previous meeting, so that everybody can understand, we agreed to do it this way, is that right?
Yes, sir. That was during the budget workshop. It was unanimous that we put this on consumption, this part of the debt on consumption.
And we as council agreed?
Yes, sir.
To do with the water and the sewer, that's where that funding was going to be and the money was going to be used for those specifically.
So that agreement from the council brought us to this point?
Yes, sir.
All right, my next question is, if, 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 if this didn't pass, what are the consequences?
Well, we've got to go back to the water and sewer budget and cut $328,000 and like I.
And what would that mean?
It's going to eventually end up in layoffs of, of workers and that's why I said in my professional opinion, it's going to be a challenge to have a water and sewer department because there's not a lot of extra money in those two budgets, other than personnel.
So, we, we incurred what, about a million and a half of salaries between two people this year.
A million and a half?
One million, where you and John's salary.
It's not close to a million.
A million and a half, I won't eat on it.
Yeah, me too.
Is what, what was?
No, no, I know.
I'm going to go, I'm going to bring it back, but anyway, we, but anyway, we need to look at.
Well, I can, I will tell you this, yes, ma'am?
So, remember I was asking at, I think earlier, I was, okay, I was asking earlier at one meeting and I was inquiring about salaries?
Sure.
So have we not looked at, you know, salaries? Because have we not looked at positions that we make not necessarily need that was created?
Because of the budget?
We're getting off the subject now.
Yes, we are, and we, and besides.
I make a motion, we, I make a motion, we move on the previous question.
You're looking for money.
Okay.
I make a motion, we move on the previous question.
Yeah, and that's the more.
Yeah, emotions are in.
Okay, wait, no, but you, you.
The previous question.
I make a motion, we move on the previous question.
That's acceptable to say.
It, it is with, with a second, then that will just terminate all discussion and proceed to the vote.
Now.
With a second, it would terminate discussion and proceed to an immediate vote.
I second.
Okay, so. So you vote on the previous question first.
And the previous question, what did you wanna do about the water department?
No, you, you just, all in favor of the previous question? That's what I can say.
Oh, I thought, okay, all in favor for the previous question, that was the one we were working on.
Yeah.
Yay, noy?
She's asking who's in favor of the previous question.
To go back to the previous question that you were.
That's three.
Okay.
Now you, now you vote on the motion that Mr. Ivey presented of approving the ordinance.
Did you?
I made the motion, we had a second.
Yeah, you had the motion in second, now that's what's on the floor. The discussion's been terminated with the previous question. And now the motion on the floor is to vote for approving the ordinance for raising the water and sewer rates or not.
I thought it was just the water rates?
No, ma'am, it's water and sewer rates.
They were both on there.
Okay, you went back and changed it?
No, no, ma'am.
No, because we, remember the first meeting we had?
Oh, no, we're talking about today.
The first meeting we had.
How are we still discussing?
Discussion is no longer on, that, that, we've had a discussion, it's up to the vote now. So that was the motion, and it's been approved.
Moved in second.
It moved in second, and now you're ready for the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
It's already been.
Yeah, but they only.
They, it's already been discussed, and that was what was on the table.
Yeah, but they bring the vote.
Uh, we're ready for the vote.
But they bring the vote.
Okay, yeah, we're ready for the vote.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Oppose? Are you opposed? Did you raise your, you, what is it? It was all, this for, all in favor? Raised already, it was the three?
With.
Okay, and oppose?
Mike's opposed.
Mike opposed, and I was asking if it, you don't vote, it's a, it's a pose, okay. It's, yeah, yeah, no. Okay, so they've moved on, motion carries. Brings us to the next item. Soon as I find my front page. Okay. Item number three, public hearing on request from Tracy Ross Jr. for specific use per, permit to place a manufactured home on property currently having an address of eight oh four Cottonwood, located between Burleson Street and West Hall Avenue, and identified by the Houston County Appraiser District as parcel forty-three oh nine and forty-three ten. Legal description being lots number eight and, and, and nine in the J.W. Hogg block of the Depot Edition to the City of Crockett.
Public hearing is open.
Oh, we're counsel. Oh, I'm, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, this is the hearing part. Public hearing, if anybody's there would like a comment, you may come and make your comment. We'll leave it open for a few minutes, a minute. If nobody has a comment on that, you actually get to say something. And we want to hear. Okay, if it's nothing, did you have something to say about that?
On, on the previous motion, is that correct?
No, no, this is only three, the request, it's the public hearing on the specific use permit, item number three. That is all you can discuss. If you have a concern or comment, does anyone have it? If not, we're closed the hearing. Okay. Hearing is officially closed, brings us to item number four. Consider an approved request from Tracy Ross Jr. for a specific use place, permit to place a manufactured home on property currently having an address of eight oh four Cottonwood, located between Burleson Street and West Hall Avenue, identified by the Houston County Appraiser District as parcel forty-three oh nine and forty-three ten. Legal description being lots number eight and nine in the J.W. Hogg block of the Depot Edition.
Mayor and council, uh, we had a application for a specific use permit as required by our ordinance from Tracy Ross Jr. to place a manufactured home on the lots that are described. Went through planning and zoning, it will meet all setbacks and requirement. Uh, planning and zoning saw that there would be no adverse effect. It would not substantially depreciate the value of adjacent nearby properties, and it will keep in spirit and intent of the city ordinance. It will not affect traffic circulation, our public utilities, our health and safety. There was a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission on September thirtieth. One person spoke in favor, none opposed. Planning and zoning recommended approval of the specific use permit for the placement of the manufactured home. It will be a two thousand and twenty-five year model manufactured home.
Okay.
I make the motion we approve.
I second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor? We have to abstain because we're.
I abstain, yeah. I have to abstain because it's, it's a conflict of interest because I own property within the three hundred feet mark. As a matter of fact, the property they took, the trailer home on, my parents actually used to own it as well.
And I'm, I had, I would have had to abstain too, because I have area, property in the area. Okay, conflict of interest, so with that being said, motion carries. All right, item number five. Consider an approved authorizing the city to proceed with lease agreement with Deep East Texas Workforce Solution at fifteen oh five South Fourth Street, Votech Center, Vacation Attic Center, and determining the lease value. Counsel?
Mayor and council, um, we have the lease agreement, um, that, with the Workforce Solutions Office that's in the Votech Center. Um, before this lease agreement is drafted and numbers are placed into it, we want to bring it to you. Uh, we did reach out to the workforce, they're aware of this, and that's why we're currently under a month-to-month lease with them, because they knew that they needed to renegotiate this after transfer of assets.
How much is that month-to-month?
Currently, the month-to-month is, as the previous is, based on reimbursements of utilities only. So they will only reimburse the city for the cost of utilities. Uh, that was the existing previous agreement. We continue on with the month-to-month in order to not default on it because that lease agreement expired that they were under. What we do is this transfer of assets will take a few more months. So we went to a month-to-month, and as the, uh, the city becomes, um, a lease for of the property under a master lease agreement, then we will sublease that property to Provalis, Workforce Solutions, and so forth. But as those leases are drafted, we want to bring it to you all to get your input on it. And I put down, I have a sheet there for you all to kind of explain some of the specs of the property. It's eighteen hundred square feet of office space. I have on the backside of that sheet, also have some pictures of it. I'm sure you all think it's a real office, if you have, there's a few pictures. I reached out without hiring a, um, some type of a license to certify a freighter and paying funds for it. Uh, this definitely falls in, council's purview to decide, um, what y'all think is fair. We did reach out to some realtors, and we got across the board, different numbers, what they, based on their lease agreements, that they, uh, work with other companies, you know, leasing, bought the office space, uh, we got very many. In talking to workforce, they, the Deep East Texas Workforce Solutions, um, they currently have five other leases, and they said that this offer here is based on the average of what they currently lease for, and they'd be, they would be willing to offer this much. If, if you, you guys decide that the lease needs to be more than that, then they would request that we go through a procurement process, or they actually go through a procurement process, seeking other buildings, other leases, other options, before they decide to pay more than what their average is. But that, that offer, the, the offer for one thousand, fifteen twenty-two is what they're offering, um, based on five other sites, and they would be willing to offer that and not have a complete procurement offer.
So. So my, my question was, so being that we had the, have the month-to-month lease agreement, so, um, and the, it has, the property has not changed or anything like that. So are we trying to do a lease agreement now to start recovering the lease fee? Or what are we, what are we doing?
Bygones are bygones.
Is going forward.
Those were announced that were replaced two in this last year. So as costs of HVACs, roof leaks, windows, um, need to be, there's maintenance costs, and there's no revenue to cover this.
Yeah, with that being said, over at the civic center, same thing. You have the chamber over there, you have the chamber there.
And as long as we negotiate a, a lease agreement with them as well.
Yes, and you, and their lease agreement is three hundred and eighty-six dollars a month.
For one office.
For one office.
They're only leasing one office, this is an eighteen hundred square foot office.
Now, my next question with that being said, um, what other conference rooms are they allowed to use or utilize for their event without a cost?
The lease.
No, no, the chamber.
No, no, that's not all the, the gems, right?
But it's, it's, it's relating to, to this agreement, it's relating to.
No, they're only on this own.
So what I'm asking is, so this, well, so that means that we should have, um, pretty much kind of talked about it before you went and talked to, because I'm asking, um, who initiated the conversation, you know, because.
That, that's why.
The council hadn't spoken, you hadn't spoken, no one had spoken to the council.
Excuse me, that has been.
That's why we're talking.
Yeah, but. Well, I will say this, this has come up before, when we first started looking at Provalis. This is not the first time we have discussed that it, that they were, uh, because they do rent another property in the city. Right down the street.
Oh, you mean, you said workforce?
Yeah, the workforce, the workforce is an established organization. They do have funding sources, and they're all, they're, they're not just this little small office. They're part of a corporation too. And so in terms of, has the city been very conscientious of it and supportive? They've been very supportive for years. This is not the first time, this is about the third time this conversation had came up. And in the me, before they, before Provalis got in, they were there, and we were just assisting them. But I think that is, I think at this time, it is appropriate for them, and we're doing each one, uh, and they're an entity that should be responsible. We, we appreciate what they're doing, but their self, but for, to, just, uh, and they've, they've been aware of it, the head department has been aware because they came and visited.
Yes, ma'am, but my understanding from the get-go, when Provalis entered into that building, is that they was very receptive, they wanted the workforce to be in that building.
And they do.
Because they, they, you know, but if they get to the point to where they can't, um, afford it or we force them to get another building because of the lease agreement and the expenses.
Let me, may I, may I interject, may I interject, please?
Yes.
That is why the agenda item is worded the way it is, to get council's input into the dollar amount. But this is the dollar amount that workforce came to us with. This is what their average rent for their facilities are, and this is what they want to pay.
Now, I have to be careful with that because of the fact that last time that you all went to, not Provalis, but the workforce, and you spoke with them, and you came back to the council with what they agreed to, is really not what they wanted to agree to. I don't know what the conversation was, but a lot of the details we didn't get. And a lot of the details we don't get when you all meet with these different, um, entities. Where, when, when you leave that, I, I don't feel like we're getting all of the detailed information, so.
How are we discussing this right now?
Okay. Where we are, okay.
We, we, we're asking questions.
Okay.
So we can discuss.
Okay, to the point, okay, you've stated. Okay, what, what they're proposing and what, what we need to hear is the baseline. They have always been aware that it was gonna have to be a charge. There's not a question about it. We went to them, and they knew that it was gonna be a charge, because they always pay for the building that they're in. Uh, we're not forcing them to leave, but it is a point where you do negotiate the best price, not looking, looking at what the market value is. That's what you do when you're protecting the city interest. They, I mean, they're, they get paid, so there's, somebody's paying them, and so it is a, and they're, they're not thinking about leaving, and we're not thinking about asking them to leave, but we are asking them that they do need to be prepared to pay a decent rental.
Part of that is, part of that has gotta be fair market value or a public benefit, and that's what our city attorney can answer as well. And that's what, the same contract that we use for the chamber, there's a couple of other things in the city, which I told you when we did the chamber one, that there was more coming. And so this is one, based on the fact that they came to us with a number. We brought it to council at the beginning of the process to get your direction to move forward with this lease agreement. And if you thought that the number that they were coming forward with was adequate for the council to be satisfied with, or if we needed to go up or whatever, and that's why we're doing this at the outset of this process with the council. Now, this is not the actual lease agreement that we're voting on tonight. The, the agenda item says, in determining a lease value for this lease agreement, that's what we're trying to determine tonight.
I mean, that's understandable, man, anybody got a building and gonna pay rent, man.
So that's, that's what.
That doesn't take no rocket science.
At the end of the day, what we need is y'all to give us a direction in terms of a lease value in a motion.
Well, this is what my question, I want to ask you, um, Mr. Johnson. You're correct, nobody's gonna really pay a, a, or, you know, not be in a building and not pay for it. So with that being said, that's a nonprofit, and so y'all gonna have to make it, make me understand. Are we not charging for balance? Is, is balance being in that building for no fee?
Okay, we're not, we're talking, no, you're talking, no, we're not making comparisons.
Because what I'm saying.
We're getting to the point where we're, we're coming close.
Hold up, hold up, hold up.
We're coming close to.
All you're doing, let me just, hold up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Hold up, no, we're not, uh, excuse me, excuse me, okay? This is where we are, no.
I'm just being fair.
What you're doing, excuse me, you're doing apples and oranges. Right now, we are an item on the table. And what that item is, is to look at the recommended cost. And what we're gonna have to agree on, should they be charged? And what is a parameter that we're looking at? We're not comparing what they're doing, we're comparing them to them, that's all it is.
We're not comparing, not charging someone else.
We are not charging, we are looking at them specifically and seeing what the recommendation. On the sheet that they gave you, they told you what the deal was, and we're going through.
And they came to us with an offer of fifteen twenty-two.
I want to make a motion, we take their offer, please, I want to make a motion, we take their offer.
What's their offer?
Fifteen twenty-two. Fifteen twenty-something a month.
Fifteen twenty-two plus their portion of expenses.
And, and their portion of their utilities. Uh, with an exception, with an exception, it'd be one-year lease at a time, just in case Provalis needs that building later, or that section later.
And they willing to pay that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I make that motion?
Okay, wait a minute, hold up.
But then I said the utilities, explain the utilities.
Did you say what the?
I said.
Explain the utilities.
Okay, hold up, let's see.
I said utilities.
No, 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 he needs explanation.
Okay. He, he made a motion, so a motion is on the floor, so the only thing can be done now is either a second, or it dies for lack of second.
I second.
So now it can be discussed.
Okay, it's been moved in second now.
We've been discussing it.
Okay, the discussion has been, and you're saying, and you, the recommendation, is what they provided is plus the, a part of the utility.
Utilities, and that's what we have on here. Uh, the utilities are being currently paid in full by Provalis. The utilities will be reimbursed between the two, the two entities. The city is not going to be the middleman anymore. The current agreement with Provalis already provides for, Provalis is paying for all of it, and they have agreed to share that cost between them and workforce.
That's my motion.
That's the only thing, we need the workforce, I, you know, we need them.
It's not a question.
Well, we, well, we're gonna do what they off, they offered it, we didn't, they offered it.
They offered it. Okay, so, any more discussion?
So what, yeah, but, and, and what, what I, what I was trying to figure out is like, even they, with them being, with them offering that, I mean, we were even advised or given the opportunity to even give a suggestion of what we would consider it to be leased for.
What is it, we're talking about it now.
Right now, that was what the conversation was.
This was beforehand, because my understanding is that before they discuss any agreements and contracts, they should advise us, correct?
You're being advised.
Whatever you want, what do you want it to be?
Okay, well, the bottom, I mean, that's your interpretation, that you haven't been advised. This is an advisement, so what, what we.
My understanding is that the council governs the body, right? The council governs the city, right?
You're gonna be advised.
No, before he goes and make any agreements, we should.
This was not an agreement, this was, we have to, on a day-to-day basis, move things forward, and so that's all this was. This was not coming to you with an agreement to be approved. This was to come to you with what was offered to us, and if the council was accepting of that or not. This is not us entering into an agreement tonight. This is only the fact, Mr. Marsh's motion is to accept their offer, and if we accept that offer, then we can move forward with the agreement, and then it will be an actual contractual agreement between the city and them. This is nothing more than we will bring back to you the next time. This is nothing more than the council determining the value. This is as open, transparent, and upfront as we can make anything.
And let me, let me just interject this one day. The city doesn't do the day-to-day, I mean, the council doesn't do the day-to-day operation. That's why people are in those positions, that's in the scope of their job, to do the day-to-day paperwork. Then they bring it back as a whole and present it, but it is not the council's responsibility to oversee the general job. They bring you the summary of what they're hired to do, and that's in their, and they brought you a summary.
You don't even know the summary, you don't even know what's before the summary, you don't even know what they're doing at all, so I'm just saying.
That's a job description.
You've, you've had a, you've had a, an agenda for a week.
But he did this before the agenda.
Okay, well, with that being said.
He went and talked to these people before.
Okay, I make a motion, we move on the previous question.
We've already done that, okay.
Yes, what I'm saying is basically, he's going out, I mean, before.
I make a motion, we move on the previous question, I second.
Enough.
I make a motion, we move on the previous question.
Let's go back to where we were.
Yeah, previous question and a second.
Second, please.
Okay, and that's the end, the discussion is ended. They just ended the discussion.
You've got a previous question, motion, and a second.
It doesn't matter, you can make it at any time.
But still.
End, end of discussion.
And I could, could.
End of discussion.
Ms. Fisher.
End of discussion. No, read your problem, you can do that.
No.
You have to, you have to vote on it.
All in favor.
We're in discussion, discussion can be completed now.
No, it cannot.
And then, then.
It cannot be considered when you call for the question. He's already called, you have to stop.
I got a second.
And it's a second, now.
All in favor of the previous question?
All in favor of the previous motion, I, I did ring it.
Okay, so, three, four. Now, you vote on accepting their offer.
Okay, that's what.
And that's already on the table?
And that was already on the table.
It's been seconded.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept offer, is all in favor?
I have a talk about accept.
Motion carries. Alrighty. Item number six, is that the right one? Am I on the right one now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Public hearing on Planning and Zoning Commission final report with conclusion and recommendation for proposed zoning text amendments relating to home-based business. Open for, the public hearing is officially open, does anyone have any direct input? The information that you have, does anyone from the public have any comments? Gone once, gone twice. Hearing is closed. Okay, bring us to item number seven. Consider an approving ordinance of the City of Crockett, Texas, amending Article Three of the Appendix A Zoning of the Crockett Code, deleting Section three oh eight, home occupations in its entirety, including the requirements for a home occupation permit or a home, I keep leaving my, occupational conditional use permit issued by the city, and replacing it with a substitute Section three oh eight, home-based business and garage sales to comply with Home Bill twenty-four sixty-four passed by the eighty-ninth Texas Legislature relating to the authority of a municipality to regulate a home-based business, permitting a no-impact home-based business as defined by House Bill twenty-four sixty-four to operate by right in a residential district if the business is compatible, compatible with the residential use of the property where the business is located, is secondary to the use of the property as a residential dwelling, or is adjacent to the property owned by the same owner, and having a primary use as a residential dwelling, is not a business that sells alcohol or illegal drug, is not a structured sober, sober living home, and is not a sexually oriented business as defined by Texas Local Government Code, Section two four three point zero two, incorporating current provision relating to the city's limitation to regulate commerce and firearms, et cetera, and current provisions relating to garage sales into substituted Section three oh eight, providing a servability clause containing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Mayor and counsel, let me try to, let me try to surmise that pretty quick for you. Basically, House Bill twenty-four sixty-four that the state legislature passed, it specifically prohibits a governing body or municipality from adopting or enforcing an ordinance that prohibits a no-impact home-based business. And so basically what we're doing is adapting our ordinance to meet the state law, is all this is doing, and there's several of those that will be coming forward, and that's all this is doing. And as far as the garage sales go, it, it is included in this because that's where it fits in our ordinance, it doesn't change, there's no rule changes regarding garage sales in the city.
Yeah, people still.
Yes, they, they can still have them just the same way they did before. All this basically does is the state basically told the city, you cannot regulate home-based businesses if they don't, if they don't create a traffic hazard of this or that, basically the state is taking the control away from the city of what we can regulate, and we're codifying that because, and it went to P and Z, public hearing, P and Z recommended council approve the ordinance change to codify it.
So, I, I didn't, and I don't know this, but, so, just maybe, can someone have a, at their house, can they have a garage sale every weekend?
No, sir, actually, according to our ordinance, they cannot be held more than twice a year.
Okay.
So what you mean by like a home-based business?
A home-based business, if you've got a perfect, I mean, if you, if you're a baker, if you're selling cakes or cupcakes to somebody, or whatever else, I mean, something that you do out of your house that you make money from, as long as it's not alcohol-related.
Maybe even a nursery for children?
Children, those kind of things, yes, sir, and basically, that's, like I said, it's the state.
Mandating.
Mandating, and it's just us codifying what we had so we're legal with the state.
So these would incur like fines and citations?
Sir.
These would incur fines and.
No, actually, this loosens it up to where unless they, we can still manage to make sure that they meet the fire and life safety code, you know, those kind of things, but it really.
Well, you, like, if they're cooking, you still have the, the, the state.
Right.
You, you still have the state lady that comes by and checks you for.
Right, Department of Health.
Health Department.
I think you're referencing to the garage sales, if they have more than how many allowed there?
Down, two per year, but the garage sale component is, it's just in this ordinance, but the thing we're codifying is the home-based businesses as a whole that operate daily.
Daily, yeah.
And so the garage sales was just put in the, or, it's in that ordinance anyway.
And their hours would not be limited?
Right, and they can't have an open sign, they, the home-based business, you cannot put any signage that says that it's a business. I mean, that's the one thing the state did keep in there, but basically, if you've got a business that you run out of your household, and you don't cause problems with the neighborhood.
No signage.
No signage, then the state says you can do it.
Okay.
And ours was different than that.
No, what about? I'll, I'll, I'll hold that.
So, that's basically what that is, and that's a, that whole thing basically is.
State change.
That's lawyer talk for codifying that ordinance, am I correct? Okay.
So they, they, they could, they could put a commercial on the radio.
Sure.
And give their address, just no signage on the property, no open signs.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion that we approve Agenda Item seven, as we're by mayor. I second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries.
And everybody, don't forget National Night Out tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, we'll be hanging out together, and looking forward to everybody being there. Thank you.
Second.